Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on August the 20th at 10:00 a.m. Commissioners Court Room, County Administration Building, 200 South Tech 70, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the notification, pledge of allegiance to the U.S. Texas flag, and Commissioner Watson will lead those.
Almighty, as we gather today in this meeting, we look to you for guidance and inspiration. Again, we ask that you please keep our first responders and those who serve us in the military safe as they protect us. For today and all future times that we convene to do the county's business, please grant us the wisdom to make each moment count, to discern truth amidst differing viewpoints, and to conduct ourselves with respect and fairness. May your spirit infuse our deliberations with a sense of purpose and camaraderie that together we may navigate toward fruitful outcome. Give us peace in our heart during these opening meetings and the strength to sustain the task before us. Let your blessings rest upon us as we work diligently toward our objectives. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is a call for citizens' input and our concerns, and we have one. Charles Mancuso.
Hello, everyone. I want to thank you for letting me speak today. I've had a bunch of bad luck, it seems like lately. June the 9th, the killer bees attacked me and almost killed me. But I already told you all that story. I talk about the medians quite a bit, and people say, well, we can't do anything here in Commissioners Court about the medians. About three weeks ago, I almost got carjacked about six blocks south of here. These two vehicles came off a side road. I'm in the left lane where the median is. There's no traffic. Two o'clock in the afternoon. Two cars come off of a side road. They do not stop. A car and a truck, they come fast off the side road. They pull in front of me. The car pulls in front of me. The truck pulls in the side of me. They slow down. When they slow down, naturally, I'm going to honk my horn. I'm honking my horn. The car in front of me stops. The truck on the side of me stops. I'm about 10 or 15 feet behind the car. The individual on the truck gets out and starts to approach my truck. And I'm thinking, the car accelerated very fast, so the car and the truck, so naturally, something's got to be wrong. And as the person in the truck comes around to my side before he gets to my side, I look in my rearview mirror. There's no traffic, so I back up. I back up and flee and get out of the bad situation. These medians are nothing more than maybe another tool that the criminals have to hurt us. I would have never, ever thought that they would do this, but they will. I'm lucky I got out of it. It could have been a different outcome. It's going to happen to other people. We need your help. We need everybody's help to get rid of the medians. So what if it costs $10 million, $10 billion? Our lives are worth a lot more than that. Like I said before, when the killer bees got me, I probably wouldn't have, I know I wouldn't have made it without the great EMS that came out and helped me. So the firemen, we need to thank all the firemen. We need to thank all the policemen. We need to thank all the county commissioners and the people that help us live a pretty good life here in Brazos County. So that's one thing. A lot of times, this has happened, and no one's ever said anything about it. I know the car and I know the truck. I'm looking for them, and if I find them, I'll most definitely call the police. But why did they pick my truck out? Nothing special about it. But let's see what we can do about it and change that. The other thing I want to say real quick is the dress code for here. I sure loved to wear my shorts today, but I was told I couldn't wear them. I got, I got on the website. It's my God, you can even get put in jail if you wear shorts. It says they give you 20 minutes to go change your shorts. I can't get home in 20 minutes. So that means I got to carry a pair of jeans in my truck. Shorts would be great. Judge, we don't know if you're wearing shorts or not, or anybody else. But you know, one thing, I hate talking about the city of Bryan. They will allow you to wear shorts, and maybe, maybe y'all can get kind of together with College Station and Bryan and have a kind of a general attire, you know? I'm not going to wear muscle shirts. Don't have any muscles, but not anymore. But it'd be great that we'd be able to wear shorts. And you know, yeah, put an age, put an age limit. He can sit there. He can sit there. I'll sit next door. You know, what I was saying is, put a limit, put an age limit. 60 plus, you can wear shorts, or not, or put a length on it, or whatever. But you know, a lot of us kind of live in shorts. Thank you for what y'all do. I appreciate it. And like I said, thank you, EMS, and thank you for the law enforcement. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, George. Next item is presentation discussions. Brazos Valley Economic Development Corporation, BVEDC 23, incentive compliance report by Ryan LLC and the BVEDC. So is that going to go online? Oh, there you are, Susan. I didn't see you.
Good morning, Judge Peters and Commissioners. My name is Susan Davenport. I'm the president and CEO of the Brazos Valley Economic Development Corporation. I'm here this morning to present through Ryan Inc., our, that, the group who has been working with us on compliance, to present the fiscal year '23 through '24 incentives compliance report for incentive deals in which Brazos County has participated. As always, I want to begin this with thanking the court, Judge Peters again, and Commissioners for their efforts to work with us on opportunities that come our way to create new jobs and capital investment and a strong regional economy for this area. We thank you for all that you do every day. So I will now turn this over to Michael Camden, who's the director of credits and incentives for Ryan to move through and to present our official compliance report. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Susan. And Commissioners, Judge, thank you for having me today. It was nice chatting with each of you as you came in. My name's Michael Camden. I didn't get to meet with you guys last year. My colleague did.
Michael, you're going to have to speak up a little bit.
You can't hear that?
Speaking to the mic.
Yelling to the mic? How about that? That works? All right.
And they tell me the same thing, so welcome to the club.
Yeah. Well, thank you, guys, for having me today. I did not get to meet with y'all last year. One of my colleagues came and presented to you, but this is, I want to say, Ryan's third year to give feedback on the compliance. We were hired by the EDC to essentially look at all the incentive agreements that y'all have in place throughout the community. And that's not, that's not just the county. It's the EDC. It's the county, City of Bryan, City of College Station. The presentation today will cover projects that actually the county was involved with from an incentive standpoint. But our goal is, we gather, after the calendar year ends, we reach out to these companies, and we gather the information that is needed. And they are all self-certifying themselves. We do a little bit of checking. So for example, most of these agreements have an investment minimum requirement. They tell us what they invested. We can cross-check that with the county assessor's office on the property that's owned at the site by the taxpayer. They tell us how much payroll was paid in the prior year and how many jobs they had. They actually give us the Texas Workforce Commission quarterly reports, so we're able to verify the payroll piece. We can't nail it down to a science as of the actual headcount they had the last day of the year, but we can check what their headcount was for the calendar year. And so our goal is really just to take that information and then report back to the EDC and then the other parties that are part to these agreements. As mentioned, there are three projects that we went over for this past calendar year, two companies. So Fuji Film and then Lubrizol, Lubrizol LSPI. We will go over what each project had to commit to, where they are, and then what the term is, because some of these are at the end of their term, and some of them are older, older agreements. This is just a little highlight of direct impact that these three projects have had. So as a group, and we didn't want to double count Fuji Film, but as a group, over 192 million in property value, over 842 jobs with a payroll over 79 million since the projects started. You can see Fuji Film, their original project started in 2014. So they've obviously, I know that they're, I want to say, one of the largest private employers in the community, but they've had the biggest impact over the last 10 years. And then in 2022, they entered into additional agreements to pursue expansion. So this is the 2014 agreement. This is the last year of compliance for those agreements with the county and both cities. They have actually far exceeded their investment. They had to show an investment of, I want to say it was $25 million. They're well in excess of that, but what they're really in excess of is the payroll and the job piece. They, they have far exceeded, I think, what their initial expectations were. I did not work on the original project, but I do work in this space, and oftentimes, what I see is, it's hard to predict what you're going to do in a 10-year timeframe, so you usually want to break that into phases. And I'm sure the 100 jobs was probably more of what they thought they'd do in the short term, but they've certainly done great overall. The '22 agreement, this isn't actually, I mean, they're, they're not to their incentive stage yet, so they actually have to complete construction, and they have to create the jobs and the payroll. And they don't, their benefit doesn't really kick in until 2026. But because they have an existing agreement in place, they've been giving updates on an annual basis since the '22 agreements were entered into. They did notify us that they're not sure that they're going to hit the exact timeframe that they originally had. So I do know that they have been in contact with county staff to discuss the agreements. I'm not part of that discussion, but I know that they're going to, I'm sure the staff will be able to update the court accordingly as that progresses. And then LSPI, they actually have, this is their third to last year, so there'll be a couple more years that they're going to have to report, but they have met their requirements. They had 24 new jobs they needed to create. They had 29 at the end of '23. They needed to have payroll of 1.5 million. They were at 2.7 million. And they needed to show property value north of 20 million. Their property value per appraisal district is 32 million. So they're certainly exceeding their commitments. And I know it's brief, but it's only, it's three projects, and you know, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer. This really reports back on the direct impact they have. If you ever wanted to find out, well, how are they, from an indirect perspective, you always hear about economic impact studies that are done on the front end. That's something that would require much more detail as far as figuring out new suppliers that maybe have come to town or suppliers that have grown because of the contracts that they've gotten with these companies as customers.
Michael, could you go back to that first, the 2014 page for Fuji?
This one?
Okay. So it had been the Brazos County cash incentive. That is a tax abatement, or?
It's, it's a tax abatement. I mean, it's cash, but it's a reimbursement.
Got you.
So after they pay their property taxes, they get a set amount back.
And I guess my question is, is that, you know, it's been 207 last year. This year, for compliance, it's 147. So actual property tax revenue relative to that will go up by, on an annual basis, to Brazos County by the 147?
After this year?
Yes.
If, if their value, and their value should stay the same, so, and I'm putting my property tax hat on here, but...
So that one's paid off, and then so anticipate 100, about 148, $148,000 a year more revenue from that property
That's fair.
than we realized before, not including what the value of that property has increased to.
Right. And it's not 100% abatement either, so you're still getting all the benefit in addition. And your real property, I mean, we've been in Texas every year. It seems like real property's going up, so.
Okay. That's great. That's nice to have that one paid off.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. You have a question?
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Okay. Next, we'll consider taking action on Agenda items four through 20. Number four is approval requested from sheriff's office for acceptance of $100 check for donation from Lawrence and Janice Thompson for Are You OK? program FY 2025.
Move approval.
Second, motion made second in discussion.
Yeah, I want to thank Sheriff and Chief Martinez, and especially Valdi Masco for the Are You OK? program. It's up and running and doing a great job, and want to thank the Thompsons for recognizing that and giving them $100 contribution.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number five is approval request from risk management for payment of modal equipment rentals and sales in the amount of $350 for repair of a portable toilet door. The door was slammed while stationed at a county road construction site.
Move approval.
Second, motion made second in discussion.
Yeah, I just, after seeing this number, I'm going to be a lot more careful when I'm using a porta toilet. I'm going to be ginger with the door. I'll say that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number six, approval of community supervision and corrections department interlocal cooperation contract for fiscal year 2025.
Move approval.
Second, motion made second in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number seven is approval of advance funding agreement with voluntary local government match on system with tech stock for railroad grade con separation interchange at FM 2347 and FM 2154.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made second in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number eight is approval of change order number two to CIP 23-576 for replacement of various roofs at the Brazos County Expo Center for additional labor in the amount of $2,873. Total of the new contract is $755,233.
Move approval.
Second, motion made second in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number nine is approval of following agreements with Brazos County Juvenile Center.
Move approval A through E.
Second, motion made second in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 10 is approval of amendment number one to CIP 24-615, facilities assessment services with VLK Architects to reduce the contract price by $1,808.5 to reflect unused funds. The contract total will now be $39,191.95.
Move approval.
Second, motion made second in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 11, award of bid 25-008 janitorial services recommended award Crystal Clear Cleaning LLC.
Move approval.
Second, motion made second in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 12 is approval renewal contract 25-014 R for independent auditor services with Brazos County with Ingram Wallace and Company, PC.
Move approval.
Second, motion made second in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 13 is consider taking action on Brazos Valley, Brazos Wi-Fi utility permit to install 3,500 feet of fiber optic cable within the right of Scaster Road along with nine roadboards for internet service sites located precinct two. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 14 is approval of treasurer's report for June 2024, quarter ending June 30, 2024.
Move approval.
Second, motion made second in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 15 is tax refund application for the following.
Move approval A through D.
Second, motion made second in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 16 is budget amendments, budget FY, budget amendments FY 2324, 44.01 through 44.04.
Move approval.
Second, motion made second in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 17 is personnel change status.
Move approval.
Second, motion made second in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Number 18 is payment of claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8204500 through claim number 8204632, and claim number 9201993 through claim number 9202044.
Move approval.
Second, motion made second in discussion.
I just was curious at this time if we have an update on where we stand on relative to making the claims accessible to the public. We talked about that, I think, last Commissioners Court meeting.
Yes, sir. We actually provided the information to one of the requesters in advance of today, and I didn't get here in time, but I understand that there were prints of documents, oh, of, of the claims here available this morning for the public to pick up. And we are, that's just our first step. Our next step will be ultimately to get this online where it's visible.
Thanks for that update, Bruce.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. We will skip down to number 21, and it's an announcement of the 2022, 2023 Brazos County Emergency Services District, ESD, for financial audit. 22 is an acknowledgement of the FY 2324 budget tax with by fund as of August 14, 2024, and an acknowledgement of the FY 2023, 2024 contingency budget to act actuals by fund as of August 14, 2024. 23 is juvenile directors report on detention population.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have 27 in detention, 20 males, 7 females, and 21 on electronic monitor.
Thank you, Linda. 24 sheriff's report on inmate population. Sure.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, 840 today, 716 men, 124 women, with 32 on monitors.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Next is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Judge, I just wanted to remind everyone that uses Oak Lake Road in east Brazos County, that there will be a bridge starting repair on the 21st. there will be a bridge starting repair on the 21st. We have an outside agency that looks at the bridges in Brazos County, and that one was identified as priority for some work to be needed. They're going to refurbish the approaches to the bridge, work to be done. They're going to refurbish the approaches to the bridge. The guardrails need to be brought up to current crash standards, but underneath, there's extensive scour work to be completed, and structural deficiencies have been identified that need to be addressed. It's, it's not been a safety issue, but if we continue to not do this work, we could potentially be looking at a bridge replacement. Currently, the public will be rerouted for 88 days in that area, and I hate for that to be the inconvenience it is, but 88 days, considering the scale of work that needs to be done, is pretty fast. A bridge replacement, should we wait longer, would be a lot longer and a lot more expensive. Also, as an update, here, just a few weeks ago, the court accepted the rights of ways for Democrat Road. Democrat is something that we would like to see paved in Precinct 2, but we haven't had the rights of way. They've been worked on for years by Commissioners before me, but we just haven't had them, and they recently did acquire those rights of ways. It was approved just a few weeks ago here at Commissioners Court. The utility companies have already been notified to please start moving utilities. Of course, you see the construction all the way around the county, in the cities and out in the county. There's a lot of work being done, so I don't know how, and, and I can't control how fast the utility companies will get out there and move those utilities. But since we have the rights of ways, we are able to request that work to be done, and when they do do that, we'll begin the work of redoing Democrat Road as well. Just an update for those folks that live out there.
Yeah, Commissioner, I, I, I think one of the challenges we face exactly is this, with this project that you bring up, is, is that in order to make significant improvements on a lot of county roads, the limiting factor currently is, is acquisition of right-of-way.
Right.
For the future. So hopefully, we will be able to do that, because as we grow, we'll have those needs. I wanted to, on a future agenda item, since this is the time of year that we have the annual update from the Brazos Valley EDC economic, the, the compliance for our economic development agreements, I'd also like to have an update on our non-BVEDC monitored economic development agreements, 381s, TERSs, and also, if possible, a status on the current, the current status on the hotel occupancy tax that I know we don't, that we don't actually participate in giving the money, but we do collect it on what the status is on that 3/4 of a percent hotel occupancy tax that was added for the expansion and renovation of Kyle Field and just where we are in that process. So if it's possible for us to have a future agenda item, and that would be an update of our 381 TERS and what's the status with the hotel occupancy tax.
Any other announcement or interest items or possible future agenda topic? Here, here you go. None. We will go back up to number 19, as convenant executive session pursuant to Texas Governor Code 551.074, to discuss the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of county personnel. And we, the time is 10:28. We need, of course, Sheriff, Commissioners, General Counsel, both.
Judge Maskey.
Judge Maskey's, yeah, there she is, Judge Maskey, Jennifer.
Judge Worthen.
Huh?
Judge Worthen.
I, I don't think this one was, I don't think this was, this one had to do with district courts. It didn't.
As, as the chief administrative judge.
Huh?
As the chief administrative judge.
I'm, I'm sorry, the conversation, it's...
I'm not hearing, I'm here, not hearing the conversation that's going on here.
Judge Maskey is here to, to address the issue that we're talking about this morning.
I can't hear you.
I said Judge Maskey is here to, to address the issue this morning. Was there anybody else besides Chief of Staff and Jennifer, probably?
Yes, sir.
And I think that's it. Time is 10:29.
I'm disappointed.
Okay, we're coming out of executive session. There is no action to be taken, and the next item is, it's 11:14, and the next item is to adjourn. We've got Karen coming up, but let's take a five-minute recess, and, and then we'll start the county clerk. Okay.